Good evening, Council and Councilor Shanneman virtually. I'll call this meeting to order at 6:00 PM tonight and I'll hand it over to Deputy Mayor Spinnick.
Thank you, Mayor Ford. The Council Corporation Township of Horn Pain would like to be respectfully acknowledging the land on which we gather here today's treaty nine nineteen oh five nineteen oh six territory. The traditional lands of indigenous peoples as worth to our reconciliation. We all live with respect on this land and live in peace and friendship with all its diverse peoples. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have the review and note to any changes to agenda. There are none. So if I can get a mover and a seconder to approve the agenda moved by councillor Bullinda Kissamaker, second by councillor Ted Shanneman. Be it resolved that council does hereby approve the agenda as presented, those in favor, and that is carried. Okay, we have a declaration of peer interest, declaration of conflict of interest. I don't have any paperwork on that as of now. Council at any time throughout the meeting, if such a situation arises, you can declare. Item number six is the adoption of the minutes. So the first one we have is from February twelfth. If I can get a mover and a seconder, please. Moved by councillor Bullinda Kissamaker, second by councillor Ted Shanneman. Be it resolved that council, the corporation, the township of Horn Pain does hereby adopt the minutes of the regular meeting of council held on Wednesday, February twelfth, twenty twenty five as distributed. Is there any comment or note on those minutes? Okay, seeing that I put those to vote, those in favor. And that is carried. Six point two is the special meeting of council on February nineteenth. If I can get a mover and a seconder, please. Moved by councillor Bullinda Kissamaker, second by councillor Ted Shanneman. Be it resolved that the council, the corporation, the township of Horn Pain does hereby adopt the minutes of the special meeting of council held on Wednesday, February nineteenth, twenty twenty five as distributed. Any comment or note to those minutes? Seeing none, I put those to vote, those in favor. And that is carried. Six point three is the regular meeting of council on February twenty sixth, twenty twenty five. If I can get a mover and a seconder, please. Moved by councillor Drago Stupanic, second by councillor Ted Shanneman. Be it resolved that the council, the corporation, the township of Horn Pain does hereby adopt the minutes of the regular meeting of council held on Wednesday, February twenty sixth, twenty twenty five as distributed. Those in favor? And that is carried. Okay, carrying on to announcements. The first, we do have an announcement tonight and I'm excited to announce that Melanie Pelon has joined us as our interim CIO. And I would like to highlight a little bio from Melanie. And I'm welcome that you are here and I welcome the Horn Pain specifically, but to council table for our first meeting with you here. So Melanie comes to us as a professional with over a decade of experience in indigenous consultation and community economic development. A proud Anishinaabe way and member of Waukemacon unceded territory. Melanie combines her roles as founder of Melanie Pelon Strategies Incorporated and the Marigawa to drive impactful and sustainable growth initiatives. Her expertise spans program evaluation, strategic planning and business development, enriched by her background in municipal leadership and corporate indigenous affairs. Melanie's qualifications include a bachelor of business administration with a minor in indigenous studies and multiple certificates that reinforce her deep understanding of economic development and indigenous affairs. Melanie has a passion for northern Ontario communities, utilizing her strategic insight and ability to balance infrastructure planning with community priorities will provide valuable guidance to help Horn Pain achieve our goals. So thank you, Melanie. I'm glad that you're here.
Welcome.
Thank you very much for having me.
Yes, it's, I feel like there's been a bit of a wait and already I was excited to hear some of the touring that we have been able to do for our facilities and that. So it's good. It'll be a good transition till we get somebody permanent in the seat for sure. Okay, moving on, we have, item eight is correspondence, action items. The first up is the Aqua annual report. If I can get a mover and a seconder, please. Moved by councillor Drago Stupanic, second by councillor Bullinda Kissamaker. Be it resolved that council does hereby acknowledge receipt of the twenty twenty four section eleven annual report, twenty twenty four scheduled twenty two annual summary report and the twenty twenty four permit to take water. Report for the township of Horn Pain drinking water system as prepared by Ontario Clean Water Agency Aqua. And I open up to the floor for any comments on that report. And Jen, you had mentioned in our meeting that there was one issue that we had highlighted?
No, that will be with the five.
That's a five or the what?
Or, yeah.
Okay. Go ahead, councillor Shannon.
Thank you, Mayor Ford. If you notice on the page eleven of the report with the HAA and halocetic acid and triom methane, again, the counts are so high. And we discussed it very thoroughly last meeting. There'll be some actions taken as a councillor yourself, especially in November. The acceptable is eighty U G or L and November was hundred four point six. So I, that's on page eleven. Very concerning to me. I'm sure everybody else is as well. Thank you.
Yeah, and it's interesting too that on this report now they've stayed higher than the regulation every time, whereas they were falling below before. But I think last year we had one that fell below. Was it in the spring or the year before? So.
Year before.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Councillor Shanneman has.
Yes, go ahead, councillor Shanneman. Thank you, Jen.
Thank you. And just a reminder, this has been going, I went back through the minutes of the meetings and this has been since two thousand and nineteen was the original when we started to go off above the limit. Now, the limits have changed and what was a hundred then it's eighty and now they're talking sixty. So, but we've been a long, long time since this has started. I went back and watched our, I think it was January twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty three, when Patrick had been saying this had been ongoing for some time at that time. So it does need to be, time is of the essence to deal with this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, councillor. And councillor Stupanic, can you highlight to me what the steps were taken at our last meeting after they presented?
Let the deputy clerk speak, please. Thank you.
Sorry to put you on the spot there, Jen.
So essentially they provided their recommendations in the draft report. And they'll be bringing back the final report shortly for council to authorize options moving forward. And they had provided, I believe, two or three different options and went through the cost effectiveness and also included the information that we would need to acquire funding for them.
Okay, and did they, they said shortly, the final report, did they give a date or an estimation of that?
Let me check. I do have an update to add to my report for next meeting.
Yeah, go ahead.
I cannot take a take it upon myself to reach out to Aqua and to see how we can action the items in, in the recommendation.
Okay. I mean technically it's through, so the HAA report and next steps is through KGS group. So it's ongoing. I'm sorry, I can't search my email right now unless I go into the browser.
Yeah, it's a problem. So we have it coming back. So I'm thinking like shortly for me, that's, I was just trying to figure out the definition of shortly. I'm thinking like by the end of May. But maybe that's. Okay, just some history on that. We were required by the ministry to investigate the HAA levels. And like Drago, or as councillor Shanneman mentioned, the legislation had changed. They kept decreasing the allowable limits. And we opted not to go with Aqua. We went with a different provider because they're our main provider and so we wanted a third party analysis. So that's that KTS consulting.
And they're a wastewater engineering firm, I imagine?
Yes, I believe so. I'm not sure all their expertise.
Okay, so I can certainly get in touch with this KTS and look to action those recommendations that come back to council in my monthly staff report, just to give an update.
Yeah.
On where we are in the process.
And our meeting's recorded on the twenty sixth, so you'll be able to see everything they said there for whatever points ever there. Go ahead, Jen.
I did pull up the email. And so this was, they had sent this after the meeting. And first they thanked council for your time on Wednesday night. And the excellent questions that were asked. And then they wanted to elaborate on the difference between the risks associated with disinfection byproducts such as HAA's and THMs and the risks of distributing non-florinated high turbidity water. Most regulatory bodies' initial focus is generally on the risks of an acute or immediate nature, namely inadequate bacteriological safety. In compliant chlorine residuals and elevated turbidity, these acute risks are not what we are facing in our municipality. The disinfection byproduct exceedances that we are facing are chronic risk, which essentially means that long exposures increase the risk of health issues over a lifetime of ingestion. The nature of this risk is traditionally the reason that so much time is provided to municipalities prior to getting compliant, particularly if work is being done to move in the right direction. This is no way intended to minimize the need for moving forward with the continued due diligence recommended, but more so intended to provide some further rationale on the risks and regulatory rationale. And then, as mentioned, they have been communicating with potential suppliers about costs and timing for the additional due diligence recommended in their report. And once this is in place, their approach is to finalize the report as is with the recommendation for more testing and due diligence, thereby completing the initial scope of work. So they will follow up.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead, councillor.
Thank you. This is a report KGS. It's quite in depth and you have to be basically a chemistry major university level to get this.
I do. Yes, yes, you do. I have a little bit of background knowledge. My best friend and neighbor is a wastewater engineer. So I am, I'm not suggesting that we change anything that you have going on, but I, I do have somebody that could tutor me to help me understand.
I think the interesting part they said when I asked the question, they're not certainly one hundred percent sure where the source is coming. Is it a lake? Linda had a great idea. Is it the water tank itself? That was her thoughts. So where's the source that causing this challenges HAA in HAA? So they haven't really pinpointed that. So it has to be unsaid.
Jen, could you print me a copy of that report? One. Can I speak? Yes, go ahead. One thing that was a concern was we always heard that eighty was a magic number for all this. Apparently with new regulations coming into play, they're saying it's going down to sixty. So that's a concern. Where would we stand in all this going forward?
Yeah, and we're having a challenge even trying to get it to the eighty over the last couple of years when they lowered it because it was a hundred previous to that. Yeah. Okay, so is there any comment, further comment on that? We'll be coming back to our HAA part, we will be, but for the Aqua reports. Okay, there being none, I put those to a vote to acknowledge receipt, those in favor. And that is carried. Okay, eight point two is the monitoring report from Pinchon for the transfer site. If I can get a mover and a seconder, please. Moved by councillor Bullinda Kissamaker, second by councillor Ted Shanneman. Be it resolved that council does hereby acknowledge receipt of the twenty twenty two to twenty twenty four triennial monitoring report of the Horn Pain Waste Transfer Site is prepared by Pinchon Limited. Okay, comments or discussion on the report? Okay, just in our agenda meeting, we did have a discussion about possibilities of procurement. Did we want to highlight those now?
I think it might be best to, I mean, we could do a brief highlight, but it'll be best to have a report on that too. But just the discussion with the rise in costs that previously the procurement for the triennial monitoring reports were done by a request for quotations. But they've now exceeded the set amount for an RFQ. So we have to look at potentially amending our wording in the procurement policy as well as looking into like Canadian procurement. But there'll be a further report on that.
Yeah, so we had a discussion that maybe our limits are too low because they're fifty thousand right now per staff. And with inflation and things costing more for the regular course of business, that it might be looking, it might be good to look at seventy five thousand or some, the staff will bring a report for that. But my question on this report is, so in twenty twenty two, so now we've got this report and what happens with this report? What do we do with it now?
I believe it's just a like requirement to have. I'm not, I know we keep a file of it. We have files of all of our reports. But I'll be completely honest, I'm not entirely sure what specifically they're used for. I would imagine funding applications, expansion, things like that.
Okay, do you want to defer to the public works manager or?
Yeah, but I don't know.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, maybe we'll just have a follow up on that?
Yeah, that would be my suggestion. I understand that it is part of our legislative responsibility and it's part of the process as we move forward in landfill management side.
Okay.
As we, as we go forward, but we can certainly confirm that that is correct.
Yeah, because my, this is where my thinking is going on this, everyone, is that if it is to check a box that we're legislated to check, then we need to know how much it's costing us to check those boxes. Because everything, we had a discussion earlier about everything getting more expensive. And if the government's telling us, okay, to have the landfill, this is everything you need, you have to do this. And in the north, we know it's more expensive to get engineering firms and to do monitoring. So, so that we keep a total of that, that we're, then we have the information at hand to say, you know, this is what it costs us. And really it's, everything's good or, or what, or what can we utilize these reports for then? So that's where my mind was going. Okay, any further discussion on that report? Okay, there being none, I put it to a vote with knowledge receipt, those in favor. And that is carried. Okay, eight point three is a support resolution. If I can get a mover and a seconder, please. Moved by councillor Drago Stupanic, second by councillor Bullinda Kissamaker. Whereas the Canadian Industrial Relations Board, as instructed by the federal minister of labor, Stephen McKinnon, ordered the end to the postal strike and the resumption of mail service, Canada Post on December seventeenth, twenty twenty four, under section one oh seven of the Canada Labor Code. We are as the federal minister of labor, Stephen McKinnon, created an industrial inquiry commission under section one oh eight of the Canada Labor Code led by William Kaplan that will work with the Canadian Union of Postal Workers, QUPW and Canada Post to examine the future of public post office. Sorry, of the public post office, including possible changes to the Canadian Postal Service Charter. And whereas Canada Post is first and foremost a public service, and whereas the commission has been tasked with reviewing the obstacles in the negotiated collective agreement between QUPW and Canada Post, the financial situation of Canada Post, Canada Post's express need to diversify and or alter its delivery models in the face of current business demands. The viability of the business as it is currently configured, QUPW's negotiated commitments to job security, full-time employment, and the need to protect the health and safety of workers. And whereas the commission only has until May fifteenth, twenty twenty five to submit its final reports to government and make recommendations about the future structure of Canada Post. And whereas it will be crucial for the commission to hear out key views on key issues, including maintaining Canada Post as a public service, the importance of maintaining the moratorium on post office closures, improving the Canadian Postal Service Charter, home deliver, sorry, home mail delivery, parcel delivery, keeping daily delivery, adding postal banking, green Canada Post, EV charging stations, food delivery, improving delivery to remote rural, remote and indigenous communities and developing services to assist people with disabilities and help older Canadians to remain in their homes for as long as possible, and at the same time helping to ensure Canada Post's financial self-sustainability. Therefore, be it resolved that the council, the corporation, the township of Horn Pain provide input to the commission in the form of a written submission. Be it further resolved that the township will write the federal minister of labor and the federal minister of public services and procurement of Canada, who is responsible for Canada Post, to demand that no changes be made to the Canada Post Corporations Act, Canada Post Mandate, or the Canadian Postal Service Charter without a full thorough public review of Canada Post, including public hearings with all key stakeholders in every region of Canada. Be it finally resolved that a copy of this resolution and the written submission be forwarded to the Canadian Union of Postal Workers and the Federation of Canadian Municipalities. Comment or discussion on that motion? Go ahead, councillor Stupanic.
Thank you, Mayor Ford. The reason I'm back in this, if you read their information, they, the postal service is looking to expand and diversify into financial institutions, home mail delivery, keeping daily delivery, adding postal banking, EV charging stations, and remote community, dangerous communities. I think that's a good thing. That's the reason I'm back in it.
Okay, great. I think it's, I support it. Actually, in our meeting, I wasn't, I hadn't fully looked into it and I have now. My concern is, is had we missed the date to submit? Because I thought I had saw that, that we possibly missed the date. And I do, I do want to support from rural and remote. We've had discussions at this level before that their current delivery method for mail hinders us because we have the southern route from Sault Ste. Marie up and as soon as that's closed, we get no mail. And that it takes a week to seven to ten business days to get a letter from Horn Pain to Hurst. And it doesn't, like, it doesn't work for us. So they need to have multiple strategies and I don't see why with the vast geographical size of northern Ontario, there can't be multiple routes. Like, that just doesn't make sense to me. So, or even from our location here, why the mail doesn't go two directions? That there's not a local. So, so I'm in favor of us sending a letter, highlighting some of those and any other issues that we are having with Canada Post. And I don't want to see it. I don't want to see it lessening. I want to see it increase with all the different shopping online now. And I think it's a vital service that we need in our communities. And if they're going to expand, I agree with you, councillor Stupanic. Let's support them. Yeah. Any further comments from council?
I just want to clarify, there's not a listed date for third parties. The date that was provided, there's two dates provided, one is May fifteenth, which is when the report is due. And the second date provided was January twentieth, which was when QCUPW and Canada Post had to have their submissions, but at that time they did not have a date or mechanism for third party submissions. Because they included that as a secondary attachment.
Okay.
So then this was the follow up for the submission.
Right on, go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify, tonight council will be passing the resolution that was read off, but you're asking staff to to prepare a letter accompanying the resolution with a writing Horn Pain's current situation and the mayor will sign it?
Yeah, well, we put in the motion that we would input in the form of a written submission. So I was thinking that we would, I'm not sure if there's a portal for that written submission. I might have used letter just inadvertently.
No, so it is through an email. And they provide the emails on the last page. And my assumption was just that we would kind of do a letter based off of the information. And here with the plus that no changes be made, et cetera, and then do it from a rural northern Ontario lens.
Okay, so do we need anything further here? No?
I think I understand. I think there's still certainly weight to pass a resolution, the resolution that you're proposing.
Yeah.
But I think a letter, a specific letter of support accompanying that with a resolution attached, I think was, I think would be good. I think would have a lot of strength.
Okay.
Yes, that's.
And addressed from the mayor with that recommendation?
Signed.
Signed by you, I think that would be great.
If council is in support, you're aligned.
And if council would like, we can add that letter of support as information only on the next agenda.
Perfect, yeah. Okay. Any further comment or discussion or anything else that you'd like me to include in the letter? Or have the staff include in the letter? Okay, I'm not seeing it. I put that support motion to a vote, those in favor. And that is carried. Okay. Okay, moving on to committee nine, committee and board meeting updates. If I can get a mover and a seconder, please. Moved by councillor Bullinda Kissamaker, second by councillor Ted Shanneman. Be it resolved that council does hereby acknowledge receipt of the committee and board meeting minutes attached to the agenda of their regular media council held on Wednesday, March twelfth, twenty twenty five. And we have the Horn Pain Public Library Board Minutes, January seventh, twenty twenty five, and January twenty third, twenty twenty five. The Northeastern Public Health NEPH Board of Health Meeting Minutes, January thirtieth, twenty twenty five. Any comment or note to any of those minutes? Okay, there being none, I put acknowledged receipt to a vote, those in favor. And that is carried. Okay, nine point two is council committee updates. So we'll do a roundtable. Councillor Shanneman, I'll start with you on the screen.
Okay, nothing to report this week. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Nothing.
Okay, thank you, councillor. Councillor Bullinda Kissamaker?
I'll bring a report next meeting. I just want to give everybody an update. I went to the Thunder Bay Municipal District Conference in Thunder Bay, so I'll give you a short report next time on that.
Okay. And you made it there safely and returned safely? You didn't hit any of that bad weather?
No, we left in time.
Oh, good, good. Okay, thank you, councillor. Councillor Drago Stupanic?
We had a very productive Public Library Board meeting on March fifth. Our next meeting is March twenty fifth. If anybody has opportunity, please go to the library website. Darnell and the staff are doing a wonderful job. They have programmed color coloring, adult unwind, create a blind date with a book, mystery book. They're doing wonderful things at the library. I want to et cetera that.
Okay, right on.
Also, as I made a commitment to three meetings previous, I'm keeping a close eye on Northeastern Board of Health. And if I need further information from there, I'll be directly sending a letter to Dr. Catton, CEO.
Okay.
If we're impacted any negative way nor pain, I'll be on top of it as I promised before.
Okay, thank you for that.
And yes, I would be interested to Ted Nioma, I'll speak to CEO. I got to come into more due payables, so I could, for that dimension of information for you to reject my schedule. And if Mayor Ford could have some stuff for me, some statements they wish me to present on your behalf, I'd be glad to do that.
Yeah, I'll send you an email for that, Drago, just an update from our meetings and then I'll copy the CIO in it, so you both have it. But I probably won't get that to you to the end of next week.
Well, that's fine. And if I could get a hard copy of, I like hard copies.
Okay, someone will print it out for me.
Absolutely.
I really appreciate that.
Okay, and just another item too was a couple of meetings ago, we, you had volunteered for the immigration committee.
Yes.
And I believe there's a funding announcement coming out for that. So someone will be in contact with you if they haven't already about an upcoming date if you want to attend.
Of course.
Okay. Yeah, I think that one's the twenty first of February or March. Yeah, I think that one's the 21st of February or March. Yeah, it's 21st.
Okay, thank you so much for telling me.
So, and that, was that in Roma?
It wasn't.
Anyway, I can't attend that, so if you, and it fits perfectly, if you're going to be sitting on the committee, that works.
Thank you.
Okay, from the mayor's seat, there's a few things that I'd like to update. So, I'll start with Good Roads. We're well underway at Good Roads for the becoming president next, at the end of the month or the beginning of April. Jen and I have finalized our travel plans and I'm, thank you Jen for volunteering and being there at my side. I'm quite concerned, it's a big role. We're going to shadow the current president through this conference. And there's many duties that the president does. Good Road staff does take care of you completely in the background. But then there's other things like the hospitality suite, hosting guests and that, and Jen will assist me in that this year. Watch and then next year hopefully, actually assist me while I'm doing it. Further update on that, so Good Roads is coming to Hornpanne. They will travel in the third week of June. I'll give you all the finalized dates, so they'll be spending two nights in our hotel here. They're flying into Timmins and then carpooling over from Timmins. My hope is that we have dinner and reception on the Wednesday night. And, and then again, we'll have a dinner on the Thursday night. And we're looking at possibly doing a tour of the mill and the CoGen. And we'll see if I can get them onto some CN equipment as well. And I'm not, and I'm open to council suggestion on any other areas that we'd like to visit while they're here. So, it will be in June, so Third Ave could be in the process of being worked on as well, so. And, and I will be inviting the Northeast Superior Smarers Group to one of the dinners. And I've had the okay as well too, because they will be traveling through Nioma and Highway 11 now. So I probably will extend an invitation to up to CAP and IN for one of the dinners, so. So we'll see, but anyway, it's, I'm getting nervous actually. I usually don't get nervous, but I'm getting nervous. I, I have to give this little story. I just, I remember I was a brand new councillor and Good Roads was the first conference that I attended. On behalf of the municipality and it was when Good Roads and Roma were still together, is when it was their last year. In the Royal York. And I just remember being in there and just being in awe of everything that was going on and trying to take it all in and you can't take it all in. And now looking back, I, I can't even really take in, how did I evolve on this board and get to this place? And it's, it's sad because once you become president, you become past president and then you're off the board. And I'm like, whoa, wait, I don't want to be done yet. But anyway, it's, so it is exciting, so it'll be a good time. So further updates, and I just want to let people know about June, that we put our best foot forward. They've been a great support to us and I'd like to be able to welcome them to our community, so. And I'll, and I'll send the actual dates, I'll forward the email, so council can get the actual dates to mark them in their calendar. Further that, so at the Northern Ontario Women's Association, we've been moving forward. I was invited to speak at the Thunder Bay Municipal District League. And I didn't attend because I was worried about weather and I would have got caught right in the storm from when I had my time slot to drive. Thankfully, Nikita was able to switch me over to virtual. And, you know, we did all those virtual meetings, you'd think you'd be old hat at it. And I, it went well. I got several feedback later that everything went well and it was good and we were able to present well. But I just want to thank council again for their support of the now and that we're moving forward. And we were able to, through the now, through Good Roads, we were able to help one individual, a brand new public works employee. In one of our communities in Northern Ontario get connected, so this is, so it's working in the background already and we're not even fully established. And it couldn't have happened without Hornpanne and Timmins supporting Michelle and I, so I wanted to say that. And, and we are currently at 62 members and Melanie in her mayor role sits on our executive, so this is, it was good, it was a really good. And Belinda was in the audience and.
She was and it was well done.
It was well done, yeah. I gave a shout out, did I embarrass you?
I think crawl underneath the table.
Okay, okay. So what else do we have coming up? Further, so Adma, the executive of Adma has met. We have our meetings, the Algoma Municipal Association is meeting in April. I believe the date is the 12th, I'm just going by memory here. Oh, sorry, this was the phone call that I said I had to take. We'll take just a one minute break. Okay, and I apologize for that. And I'm not sure if I had announced to the community, I had announced to council previous to starting. That I had to take a phone call sometime throughout this meeting and it's done now, so that's good. Just with further updates, so the Algoma Municipal Association is meeting in April. And I have talked about possibly having them come to Hornpanne in the fall. And that'll be discussed at our upcoming meeting schedule. We're looking at hosting two meetings, I believe, every year in person and all the rest virtual. To, it's just too difficult to go across the Algoma in the wintertime, so. And then the last update I wanted to give was for Adsab. So we had our meeting and I, at our last meeting, I asked specific questions, so they would be put on the minutes for our other communities. And I'm going to forward, continue that way moving forward. Because I find that then there's a record of it and I can reach out to the communities ahead of time with a quick question. Is there anything you want to ask? Is there anything from these minutes you want to know about? And then it's just clearer and concise and it's easier on everyone than trying to have meetings ahead of time and organize all of that. So hopefully that'll go well and, and I think that's it for my updates. Okay. Oh yeah, moving on then to new another business. And this is 10.1, this is a council discussion on the 2025 Winterfest. And I'm not sure if staff wants to open the floor or.
I can just advise, you and councillor Chinaman had mentioned bringing this as a council item. Just to discuss future council breakfasts during Winterfest and go over how that went and just the general, how Winterfest went this year.
Yes, yeah, so as you know, council, we ended up, I ended up having to make a decision about this, are we going to participate outside? And then we brought it to the 12th meeting and then the breakfast was four days later. And I wouldn't want to put myself or anyone in that position again. So just that we either flag it early in the fall and we have a discussion then, or that we flag it at some point, that council's going to participate. I, I have no problem setting, because it's our council that's there next year in February, I have no problem just saying we're going to do a breakfast. Because it's us, but I wouldn't want to put that every year. The new council may want to do something completely different. So if council's in favor of that, I would like that just to be standing and then we don't have to worry about having it brought to council. And councillor Chinaman, you updated the grocery list quite well last year and that's what we went off of this year. We did have a bit of extra food this year, but less participants, I believe.
Yes, thanks, Madam Mayor. I, I don't think the community was aware, again, that's where we always come back to, how, how do we publicize Winterfest? And the reaction I got from people after the fact was, oh, I didn't even know, I never thought about it, I didn't realize. That the, the page that went out, I think was in the mail Thursday or maybe Friday. So people weren't aware as much, so we, we. In, last year, we had 117 out, this year, we were high 60s, so we were considerably lower in numbers. Yes, considerably, but I'm, I'm game to do it again next year if all is well, thanks.
Okay, thanks councillor. Yeah, so we can move forward that next year, we try and have the, or have the agenda maybe the Friday preview, like one whole week ahead. And I'm glad that we did have a mail out this year, because I know in the past that was even, people utilized the mail out in the Winterfest. And did staff have a follow-up meeting about Winterfest, have they improved it in the background?
We have not, we didn't have any issues this year and with the staffing shortage. We figured it'd be good for when we have a permanent CAO to get there and put on future Winterfest.
Okay, okay, well, I'm good with that. Why don't we flag it for something that we have a discussion in October? At a council meeting, I know it seems like it's far off when it's four months away, but that might, if we flag it for one of those meetings. And hopefully we have the new CAO in the seat by then and it won't get lost. Not lost, but you know, having it right before the meeting of the Winterfest. Councillor Stanek, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. I think the staff, the short staff, I think did a solid job. I mean, we were lacking. In my past life, usually when I organized Winterfest, I organized about 25 minutes from this, I refer to it as Director Parkson Rack. I always mailed it out two weeks prior to the event.
Two weeks, okay.
And what happens, if some people missed, did not get their schedule into municipality, tough, they missed it. They have to do their own promotion, because I, I think there's, it was a lack of staff, it was, it was difficult. I mean, some people were not in tune, they don't get a website. But I think the hard copy, at least minimum two weeks from my experience, would be really, really good.
Okay, yeah, I'll take that advice for sure.
And I would also agree that we can make a decision within the next couple of months to have that date set for breakfast and we're fine.
Yeah.
I agree with you.
Okay, sounds good. Councillor Kissmaker, go ahead.
I do want to ask one question. Did we have, usually, I know. Someone, I, it was, Jay would usually put a meeting together with people wanting to meet and put things into the. Into the program. Did that happen this year at all?
Jen, go ahead.
So the past couple of years, Shanna sends a mail out to the general people who participated. And I believe puts a pop-up on the website as well, that, so she did do that. And I will take responsibility, everything was a little bit rushed this year because it snuck up on me, so I apologize. And it's my first time doing it. But it did, Shanna did reach out to all of the normal organizations.
That's all I needed to know, because I didn't, didn't remember seeing anything, so I was just wanting to question if we did do that and, because that would have helped with the programming. So, okay, thank you.
Right on. Okay, well, that would be great. We have that discussion. The other discussion I wanted to bring up was the emergency measures that ended up happening on the Sunday. So if you recall, on the Sunday of Winterfest, that's when we had the pipe break at the town, at the water plant. So it was the intake pipe from Moonlight. So, and I have to applaud staff first of all. Huge shout out to Dwayne, to Aqua, for being on the ball right there. You know, we had a staff member drive and meet to get the part and, and get it installed. I think from the time it broke to it being back running was something like five and a half hours or something, which was. Pretty amazing, because the, the amount of pressure that that part is under and, and what we needed. And that it was in the vicinity of Northern Ontario, it was, it all worked out. But my concern, the fallout of that, was that we didn't have any measures put in place, like we were making decisions. We decided when we found out that we had the part, we opted to go ahead with the bonfire. So we were making these decisions on the fly in, under the guise of emergency, like, and I put, the other thing was too. I went on Facebook, my own personal mayor's Facebook, to alert people right away to start conserving the water. Cause we didn't know when it first broke, how long it was going to be to get the part, right? So, so I'm, I'm just concerned about that. I'm concerned about when we're having events. What those emergency measures are, or if there's a step-by-step plan that we can have. Or does the emergency association have one, that sort of thing? Those are the questions I was, because it wasn't. It wasn't like a full-fledged emergency yet, it was at the beginning stages and it could have quickly went either way. Thankfully, it didn't. And, and once you're into a full-blown emergency, yes, that's fine, but I'm, I guess it's that pre-judgment area. So I think we should do a bit of work on that. I don't, I leave it up to staff to figure out what that is exactly, but. And, and the need, I, I have to say, like, I would have utilized a township Facebook page for sure. Like it's, and I want to put it out there, I am not, my Facebook page, when I'm gone being mayor, won't be there. And, and you know, and we, I think there's a need to build the, the own township's capacity.
Yeah.
So, so anyway, I leave that with staff, that's just my comments on it. And Melanie, you're welcome to talk to Dwayne to find out more about what went. And what the challenge was and how it was mitigated. And I have to say, from my perspective, it was really well done on all fronts. It was handled professionally and, and I have to say, the Aqua staff went above and beyond, really. So, go ahead, Melanie.
So really, what I'm hearing from you and replying back to you to make sure that I'm correct is. I mean, handling an emergency and a crisis is really, there's communication strategy that I feel like we need to prepare and we need to create. Get the endorsement of council before the emergency happens, so we're not doing it on the fly. In the event that you were away or on vacation or at work, we would have been. You know, in a, we would have been unprepared to communicate with the residents of Hornpanne. So I think I hear that as a priority, that we do need it to prepare a strategy and policy. That can support council and, and the staff and get training on that. Cause I think social media is really, it's not, it's not strategy completely, but it's a huge piece of it. And then if we can train our staff in, in how to do that and then train everybody. Council, staff on really effective communication pieces, because sometimes that can get out of control.
Yes, and I'm glad you said that, Melanie, because I'll tell you, I have felt the weight of that in our last three emergencies. That, and I'm, like, I felt the weight of it, like, if I wasn't there and I, and it should not be that way. It should not be pivotable on one person pivoting and, and exactly right in the sense of that water emergency. I don't know if any of our other councillors have the Facebook profile that I do. Go ahead, Jen.
I just wanted to mention, I, the fire department was also on standby to do door-to-door deliveries of notices if needed. And they were going to do that if the part wasn't going to be within a certain amount of time, but when we found out, it was a couple of hours away.
Right, yeah, so thanks to the fire department too. And just a second councillor, just one note on that, Melanie, you can talk with Jen. And we did scrape together a skeleton of communication and emergency situation. Using the primary board at the pavilion. using the primary board at the pavilion as our one paper medium location. And and we put together some of that background, but I do think we need to add a social media. And I agree that if it's like councillor Stefanic stepping in, well, this is, so he knows what's, where the media is going to be, what's going on, or whoever is at this table. So I think that's a great idea. Councillor Stefanic?
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for the update. I think the crucial time, look, in what you're saying to me, when is the decision made to go to emergency mode, right? Is it second hour or third? I think that's the key. You as a mayor make the decision. And we have to live by it. And I respect that. Because you can't second guess yourself. Things escalate to no control. So you make the decision. Is it after four hours, if they're after five? Because you're in continuous contact with the staffing. So you make the decision and go from there. Though, I mean, once we get the, but that's what would be my inclination.
Yeah, and I have no problem with that. That part isn't, that doesn't bother me of making the decision. It's the the pre communication ahead of it, right? Like, are we getting everything out so that the first communication isn't, oh, the, you know, the mayor put the town in emergency, you know, like that there's, people are understanding, preparing. And and it was, like, I have to say, we went, I was driving around, going to different locations that day, checking things out and and had been at the stores because we checked at how much water was in the convenience stores that evening to make sure there was extra water, if people needed drinking water, that sort of thing. And so there was other measures being done in the background and and people were buying water because they saw the announcement, right? And and you think about it, too, like, especially with people with young babies or making formula, that sort of thing, like, it's, yeah. It was imperative to get it out right away. So but go ahead, Jen.
Oh, I I just thought so. And in addition to informing the community members, we did reach out to specific entities, so C N, the the bunkhouse, the hospital, fire department, of course. I informed H H C for the apartment building and they closed off the laundry machines. There was quite a few things that were done just to try to mitigate any unnecessary water usage. And we did post on the website, which I learned how to use that day. Learned how to post. Got to say, Shannon has excellent notes for how to post on the website.
Oh, good. That's good to know. So there's a step by step.
Yes, thankfully. But yeah, it was, we did try to get on it as fast as possible for that.
Yeah, so thank the staff and thank you, everyone. So it's a constant improvement, but I I was concerned just because we had, it was, it just seemed like we've had a few emergencies, like we had a fire during a huge local festival going on in town last June or July, and it just seems like I'm gonna get gray hair. Anyway, if there's no further discussion on twenty twenty five Winterfest, so we have it flagged, we'll have a discussion sometime in October and hammer that out at council's end. And moving on to bylaws. So we have bylaw twenty one seventeen, twenty twenty five water and sewer rates. If I can get a mover and a seconder, please, move by councillor. Ted Shannon, second by councillor Belinda Kissmaker, be resolved that bylaw number twenty one seventeen being a bylaw to set the water and sewer rates for the municipality for the year of twenty twenty five. Be hereby read a first and second time, be considered read a third time and finally passed. And Jen, you had a comment to this bylaw?
Yes, so two. This was passed, well, we did pass the twenty twenty five water and sewer rates at the last meeting. However, Richard noticed that there was an error in one of the calculations. So this is repealing and replacing that. But we also did notice, I believe, yesterday or today, that in this current one, one of the multi residential agreements was accidentally removed as well. So if council is willing to pass this bylaw and adopt it tonight, prior to the signing, we will add that back in. So right now, you'll see that there's a multi residential agreement for seventeen point five. That's their weighted amount. But there's also a multi residential agreement for twenty two point five that was omitted. So we just have to add that back in.
Does council see those two amounts? If you need a further explanation, I can get Jen to say it again, just so that you see it.
That's fine, please.
Yeah, so on Schedule A, you'll see that there, the third one is a multi residential agreement for seventeen point five. That's the weighted amount. And that is the H H C's agreement for the Parkview Apartments. And there's another multi residential agreement that is, that was missed on this Schedule A and is on previous Schedule As. And that's a multi residential agreement at a weighted amount of twenty two point five. And that is for, I believe, the C N bunkhouse. I just know that it's a agreement with C N. So we just have to add that back in.
Okay, any further clarification on that?
Thank you.
Okay, there being none, I put that bylaw to a vote. Those in favor? And that is carried, none opposed. Okay, item twelve is motions, notices of motions. There's none, so we're moving into a closed session. If I can get a mover and a seconder to move. Move by councillor Drago Stefanic, second by councillor Belinda Kissmaker. Be it resolved at the next portion of the meeting at six fifty six P M. Be close to the public in order to discuss labor relations or employee negotiations pursuant to section two thirty nine two D of the Municipal Act two thousand and one. Those in favor? And that is carried.
Okay, if I can get a mover in a second or to return to open please. Moved by Councilor Dragos Panik, seconded by Councilor Belinda Kissamaker. Be resolved that Council of Corporation, the challenge of the corn pain. Does hereby return to open council at 7:34 PM, those in favor. And that is carried. Business arising from the closed session, there's nothing new to report tonight. To the public, it's ongoing and we'll come back to an upcoming closed session. Adjournment 15.1, the confirmatory, if I can get a mover in a second or please, moved by Counselor. Belinda Kissamaker, seconded by Counselor Ted Scheneman. Be resolved that by law number 2118 being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at the regular meeting held on Wednesday, March 12, 2025. Be hereby read a first and second time, be considered read a third time and finally passed, those in favor. And that is carried. And our adjournment council, if I can get a mover in a second or moved by Councilor Dragos Panik, seconded by Councilor Belinda Kissamaker. Be resolved that council does hereby adjourn this regular meeting of council held on Wednesday, March 12, 2025. At 7:35 PM, those in favor. And that is carried. Thank you, council. Have a good night.